All right, I'll wait for Linda.
Jeff.
Just waiting for Linda, oh, there she is. Are you ready, though? Okay. We will call this meeting to order. Record of attendance, you know the question, Linda, you good? Declarations of conflicts of interest, anybody? Good? Approval of agenda, additions? Additions or deletions, council, okay, just a second, because I pressed your button, but I did it every time for 12 months. I've done it twice a month for 12 months, 13 months. Am I? There he is. Okay, Councilor Landry.
Thank you, Your Worship, I'd like to delete 6H, please, thank you. That matter's been looked after.
6H by law review.
Thank you.
It's gone. Anyone else, additions, Councilor Mooney, go ahead.
Salvation Army, Your Worship, please.
M and O, we're gonna put it under 6O. Salvation Army. Good? And everything else is listed on a separate sheet, did we find these? These aren't things that we have to add, they're already added? Okay. Okay, so these weren't circulated, so 6 out council expenses, teacher recognition, the modified house project, correspondence for action, and the ferry terminal.
Make a motion, we accept the agenda with the additions, Your Worship?
Moved and seconded. Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Staff report, CAO, did you want to speak to that? Go ahead.
Your Worship, my apologies, I don't have a written report for you today. I will, yeah, I know. I will circulate one in the next few days, and it's just it's been extremely busy, and I didn't get it done, so there's no excuse, except I didn't get it done.
Thank you. Fire department report. And the chief is here. Welcome. Okay. Any questions for the fire chief? Councilor, somebody else is like, there it is, Councilor Mackay.
Yes, thank you, chief, how are you making out out there with your staff and the facility itself? You're in there now, everybody knows you, and you've got your feel of the building and the equipment and everything. How's it working for you? Have you got any thoughts about what should be, shouldn't be there? You plan on making a list, checking it twice, and all the other good stuff? I just want to get a feel how you're making out.
It's going pretty good, actually, very well. I've met everybody, I should, so far, within the department. Now I'm looking at our CMP, EHS, and all those divisions and stuff, to get to know them, and so they can get to know me. Got some plans and stuff for next year, for diversity, and getting more volunteers and things, but all in all, it's working out very, very well.
Well, that's good, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that, that's great, so if that's all you got to say, that's all I wanted to ask you. I did want to keep you from other things, but thank you. It's good to hear you're doing good.
Councilor Mooney?
I think just basically, Your Worship, thank you, nice seeing you again, John. Any difficulties last night with the wind? Were we called out at all?
None that were reported to me, anything that's gonna be above the norm, what they'll do is they'll give me a call on the cellphone, and then I'll pop into the fire department, and we'll take care of it, right?
And the other question Councilor Mackay touched upon is just about getting more recruits and more volunteers, but we have a meeting, we usually when we do the budget process, all department heads come in, so maybe at that time we'll have a little more in-depth chart, and I know just from what you said today, that it is on the radar, and it is right across the province, from what I understand, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Landry?
Thank you, Your Worship, also, I just, thank you, Councilor, you're just picking my feeble memory here. Your Worship, we used to have a fire advisory committee, which we elected not to form, or whatever, for a variety of reasons. But one of the things left over from that committee, we did look at, the CAO will recall, we were looking at the possibility of financial incentives for volunteers, for fire volunteers, and we did get some information, if I'm not mistaken, from, I think it was New Glasgow, if I recall, where they have a system set up as ways that we can provide incentives to young men and women to join the force, to get involved, and I'm wondering if that's something we should kind of dust off the shelf, and look at that as well, that was my first question.
CAO?
Thank you, Your Worship. Councilor is correct, we do presently provide honorariums based on the number of hours that are recorded, fires attended, training attended, and so on, and we did increase that amount of money over three years to, I think we're over $50,000 a year now, that we provide to the entire group. But the New Glasgow model is different, and we had talked to their chief, and I've talked to John a little bit about that, and that is something we'll look at in, as part of that strategy about recruiting and retaining solid core volunteers for the fire service. It's on the list.
And the second thing I was gonna ask, I remember one July meeting where Martin Pink was sitting across from me, and we were kind of playing with the idea of we were gonna be out in 20 minutes, Jeff will remember that meeting, it was really short, and all of a sudden, CAO brought in, oh, we have just one more item on the agenda, little one, new fire hall. You know, your fire hall, the adequacy of it, I'm thinking, I'm one that likes to look down the road five-plus years. Is there anything on the burner to look at where that building is? I know we're involved with the new RCMP station, at one point we were talking about the joint services building. But the idea of looking at that facility, maybe something in, you know, expanding it, looking at it, is it suitable for needs? Is there anything or any thought going into that process at all? I'm looking like, what is the lifespan of the building, and should we be looking down the road at a major capital project, or looking at this as a capital project for future councils? Just to start laying the groundwork, just as a thought.
Would you like me to, yes, there's a number of studies that were done on the station itself, the actual physical station. I've read some of them, there are some interesting things there and stuff, but I guess for the past few years you have been looking at it. But yes, in the future, some plans will have to be drawn up, and we'll have to have a new facility at some point in time. When that will be, good question.
Good. Councilor Mackay.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, just one quick follow-up on that, Councilor. Myself and the, and Councilor Mooney, and the deputy fire chief at that time, and a couple of the volunteers, we went and looked at a couple, two or three fire stations in the valley. I'm not sure if it was last year or the year before, but we did go look, and we were getting a team together, and it kind of slid by the wayside, but you might want to talk to your deputy minister, Wainwright, John Wainwright, and he's the one that took us up, that showed us some of the fire departments, and the CEO might have some information on that. He was part of the team that went, now that I recall. And it's not gone off the burner, but I think, but perhaps with you being the new chief and that, I, for one, would like to see it placed back on sooner than later, and let's get the ball rolling, and let's get this up and running, because it is an old building, it had some patchwork done on it. It's stable right now, but let's see where we can take this, let's start doing the groundwork, as Councilor Landry said. Thank you, Your Worship.
Good, any more questions for the police, fire chief? Thank you. Planning department report, and I see Mr. McDonald here. Only questions. Arthur, did you want to say anything? Anything that you wanted to throw out there? Okay, Councilor Mackay?
Thank you, Your Worship, Arthur, I have been talking to the CEO about transit, something about the transit system for the town of Yarmouth, and there's a plan that you're working on, and the CEO can correct me if I'm wrong, or perhaps enlighten me into what that stuff that Arthur's doing, the planner is doing, some sort of project or something that takes in the transit system that we've been talking about for the last two or three years, and he's, you left it to Arthur to play some sort of role, to do some paperwork, so could you?
Arthur has provided me with RFPs to do
That's what it was.
Two things, one is to have the design of the system done, and the second is to have, to tender for the service, that that would that comes out of that design. That hasn't been let yet, but I do have the documents in my inbox to proceed with.
Okay, great, then I don't have to ask Arthur, because you have the information. Thank you very much, thank you, Arthur.
More questions for the planning department? Good? Arthur, you good? Certainly.
We're all aware that within the planning department, we are down one position right now, the building inspector position is vacant. And we do have an intermunicipal agreement with the municipality of Yarmouth whereby their building inspector is appointed by the town as a building inspector, and so Roger is assisting us in keeping up with the files. We don't have, at this point, a similar agreement in place with Argyle, although they are interested in assisting us and having a similar agreement. So if you're comfortable with that, I would think it'd be appropriate to have a motion to enter an agreement with Argyle, and to appoint Mr. Muse and Mr. Sullivan both as building inspectors in the town of Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded, that we appoint Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Muse?
As building inspectors.
As building inspectors in the town of Yarmouth. Any more discussion, Councilor Mackay?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, this would only be till we replace the outgoing building inspector, because or is it going to be, we're not going to be replacing this person, or how is this gonna work?
Well, we are in the process right now of, we've done the job, and we've put it out there, and we are looking to replace the building inspector. The agreement we signed with the municipality of Yarmouth about six months ago was to assist us in times of need, so when our building inspector's on vacation, or in an absence, or when the position is vacant, and so what this motion would do is allow us to sign the exact same agreement with Argyle, and by appointing these two gentlemen as building inspectors in the town of Yarmouth, that enables them to come and actually do building inspection in the town when needed, and the agreement is a cost recovery basis, so if Roger spends three hours in the town of Yarmouth doing building inspection, they keep track of that, and they bill us for that.
And the same would be when we receive hours, get hours?
And we would do a reciprocal, that's the agreement provides reciprocal, so if we have a building inspector, and Roger's on vacation or absent, we can provide that service back to the municipality.
I remember the previous agreement, but this is just what they're gonna write.
This is just an extension of that, and it will be an existing agreement that we can tap into as needed going forward.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilor Mooney?
Think there, CAO, do you think there's an opportunity for us to explore other avenues with the other two municipal units, with maybe having two building inspectors for three municipal units?
Go ahead. Oops, why am I not?
There we go.
You're next. Go ahead.
Okay.
Answer that one.
Sure, we, actually, we met with the wardens and CAOs for five municipalities this week, and talked about intermunicipal service sharing, and that was one area that there was a fair amount of discussion around, building inspection, so I do believe there is a possibility of maybe a closer integration, but how that would work, we have, we've just begun discussions generally.
Good, definitely may.
The motion includes names of individuals. Do we need to include the names of the individuals, or can we just include the positions, that's all?
No, the building official in the town of Yarmouth, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but has to be actually appointed by council by name, and so that's why the names are included.
Yes, that's right. Good? Okay, question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Operational Services Department report. And Mr. Ernst is here. I, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, Your Worship.
I just want to ask very quickly, it says the roofing job is substantially complete. Got a date?
That was one of my questions.
Okay, so that's not like a couple months, that's just, it might be? Do you need an assistant chaser?
No, no.
Okay. Thanks, Dave, I just, I know nothing about this, I just always wonder, like, when does it come down? Councilor Landry?
That one's gone through my mind, I, on the way in, I mentioned to the guy, that's, this project's the project from heck, you know, in some respects, how long it's taken to do this job, I can't imagine how they made money. David, a question I had for you is, and again, just having a senior moment here, what's an ozone generator? What do we use that for? See, we have an ozone generator update, and I'm curious, does it generate ozone, or is it used for ozone, or?
Yes, it generates ozone, and it's used for odor control, odor to compost.
Perfect, that's what I was looking at, good, I was wondering about that. And the other question, and it's more, I see it with lighting, I've had a couple of, not a couple, I've had three now. People approached me with regard to the stop sign on Charles Crosby Drive going down, we take that herd right? There's a herd right there. Help me, Councilor Mooney, is that Chestnut Street, Elm Street, I get those three streets always confused.
It's Elm.
Elm, it's Elm Street? I've been asked why that is a stop, why could that not be a yield sign? And just, it was passed, I know in your capacity as traffic authority, I told them that I'd pass it on to you, and when I saw crosswalk signs, I thought, okay, I'll pass it on to them, and you can ponder it.
Well, we could look at it, I mean, it was originally installed as a stop sign, just to make sure everybody stopped there and looked before proceeding, but whether or not a yield sign would do the same thing, I can have a look at it.
Not the way they come flying through there? I think it's the safety thing, you have to stop so you're not flying around that 90-degree?
Pretty sharp.
Yeah, it's sharp, yeah. Councilor Doss?
Thank you, Your Worship, I just wanted to convey many thanks when it came to the Christmas lights in the trees this year in the park. More and more young families are coming to spend evenings in Frost Park, and there's nothing but, nothing but glowing reports that are coming. And also hopes that more trees will be lit in the future. Just wanted to share that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything you wanted to, anything extra, Dave, that you wanted to share?
I can't think of anything offhand.
Okay. We good?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of, we didn't have the intense rains that we've had in the past.
Councilor Landry?
And I will add, Dave, your crew this year did a real commendable job in the leaf department. They really had their act together this year in getting leaves, and I think part of the reason why we got away so good last night was because all the drains were cleaned, and I noticed the guys had the vacuum truck out, cleaning things out, and they really went out of their way this year, and I just wanted to express that thank you as well, because that really helped a lot, especially with the whole business of the leaves getting picked up. Dave, I was gonna ask you as well, something to think about, and again, pondering. Some communities of late have been encouraging their residents, and I was gonna bring it to communities in Bloom, but we're here anyway, encouraging their residents for leaves to actually leave their leaves curbside, for curbside pickup, and then the tent is used by the town for compost down the road. Currently, right now, people rake their leaves, put them in bags, and it's picked up by our haulers, and it's taken to the various to the various compost facility, which we own, of course. But some areas have actually been like a tree pickups, and we say, okay, during the week of such and such, we're gonna be picking up leaves and limbs and that sort of thing. Is that something you think we would look into, or is it something feasible, or just leave things the way they are? I'm just curious.
Seems to be working quite well the way it is, but I mean, that's just my opinion. I mean, we're doing it anyway, so we're going the same route, it's not a special trip, so.
Thank you, thanks, Dave. Finance Department report. Okay, Jerry's. Out today.
Paying the bills.
Paying the bills. That works. Yarmouth Recreation, Frank's not here. Grants to organizations process. What was that? Go ahead, CAO.
Your Worship, because we talked about doing the process earlier this year, in order to, I guess, have the decisions made before the start of the fiscal year, and to particularly assist those that receive grants, and to assist with their taxes. But there was some discussion to refer, well, it was actually referred to this meeting, to talk about the process itself, and so
Oh, okay.
For council to have a discussion.
All right, so I remember a date of December 20th for some reason, I just don't want everything to get mixed up with Christmas, so I'd be in favor of a little longer, go ahead, Councilor.
Yes, Your Worship, I noticed that in the paper, I think we had an ad for grants to organizations, they're supposed to put their, I think that was what you were referring to, and I'm just wondering if that's may get lost in that Christmas oomph, but I know we're, and I think her worship's point is well taken. Maybe we should look that maybe a little bit into January, a week or two, or at least give people a little bit of leeway, or have we been getting a response from organizations? Have they been coming in? Oh, well, that's a start, people are knowing. You know, and again, I don't mind if, or I don't know other councils, even contacting groups to say, hey, by the way, did you know that? Because not everybody's reading the paper. I know we can do something on social media as well.
We can use social media, and it is on our website, and we can actually even contact the groups that applied last year, just to let them know of the change. It, the only challenge we have, if we move the, if we move the deadline into January, is that it moves the whole process back, and there's quite a bit of work on Linda's part, in copying and so on, scanning to prepare. That's right.
So can we, can we get ahold of a list, of course, the ones that applied, and they're on our sheets, that's one thing. But you know, the late comers that you get throughout the year, so all those put together, that's probably easy, well, not easy, but is it easy? It's easy for you? Okay, and so the only other thing is, we have like the baseball, and people coming in for, does that come out of the same pot? Still can. Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I've done, I've done a couple of those like that, I'm just wondering, like, you leave so much, but you can't tell minor baseball come in because they don't know that they're gonna get the tournament? And I can't remember if that comes, go ahead, somebody.
I'm probably gonna say the same thing the CAO say, that's why, that's why we have that built-in cushion there, in case there's organizations for provincial championships, or annual meetings, or general meetings that are coming to our area.
Same pot, it's just leftover, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I think it's, I think it's fair, I think it's fair, and it's probably a good thing to send a note out, and just say, you know what, it's coming up, you need to, it's one more step, but at least we're covered. At least we did what we had to do. Okay, so is there a motion on the floor? Go ahead, Councilor.
Also with this process, Your Worship, I know January, February, March, sometimes people are away, or holidays, or that sort of thing. CAO, when were you looking at the actual interviews with these groups? Were we looking at doing that in January, because it'd be kind of nice to get that moving, in case people, it's hard to get everybody around the table, and I know every time we end, in the past, we ended up, and it means some poor soul is gonna sit here for 12, 14 hours, because that's how long it takes, as we remember from last year, to watch the videos and the actual thing, so it'd be nice if we could somehow get a date made early, so that we can have our books planned, and say, okay, this is the weekend, so we avoid that day in our schedule, you know, be it January, February, March, I don't care when it is, but I think, because I know all of us, we've got a lot of committees, and a lot of boards, a lot of things we're on, if we knew that date was set in stone, this is when we're doing it, the groups would also know, and people would be more prepared.
Okay, CAO, did you have one answer?
Yes, we should be doing that in, I'll say, late January, we should pick a Saturday in late January, and the reason I say that is it gives us a bit of time between the deadline and that meeting to arrange the schedule for people to come in, to make sure everything is scanned for you folks to review, and then we need to agree, the next step after that is the actual allocation of your funds, and so we need to put a deadline on ourselves around when you will make the decisions on your own spreadsheet, and get it in, like, if we do that late January, we can make the March council meeting to approve the grants. 25th.
Party the next day's my birthday, I'll bring the cake. Some Lebanese food for you. No, I said I said some Lebanese food for you, and we're gonna bring cake. January 25th. We good with January 25th?
Yes, you'll send out
I am, we'll send out notes, yeah. Get it done, and then it's done. So Well, she'll send out a note on it. Ken, you wanna? Wanna make that motion?
I'll just make a motion, Your Worship, that we have the grants to organizations meeting and interviews on Saturday, January 25th, commencing at 9 o'clock, is that? 9, okay, 9:30, okay, 9:30.
Seconder? Second? Any more discussion, question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Done. Coal Shed Music Festival.
Your Worship, this was referred to this committee the whole meeting, and it's regarding to the Coal Shed Music Festival, the festival, as we know, it's been kind of a kind of a awkward process the last couple of years, because we've approved grants here, and then come back and had to approve additional monies because of the expectations of the festival versus the process that we normally go through with other events, and so I guess the question is, before we get into the grants process, is how do you want to deal with the Coal Shed Festival? Because the expectation from them is, we provide a sound system at whatever cost, and we provide a grant to help them with their expenses, and there's also not sure, but I believe that we have provided security down there through the waterfront corporation. Waterfront Corporation has a tent down on the property, so
Okay.
And when there's equipment in there, I guess that's what they've done, so we need to be clear what we are doing, so that everyone is clear before we get down to the 11th hour.
Councilor Landry, or Councilor Mackay, you're on.
Well, I'm on.
You are.
I was never turned off, isn't that so?
I got you, I got you covered.
Okay, you're a good girl. Would it be possible to give them two grants, one for the sound system, and one for their grant? For like, security, and the first grant they get, because they always come back for more money, so that would be another grant? Or just lob it all into one? Because the sound system seems to be the most troublesome piece of the puzzle. The first grant, then they come back for more money because it's not enough. Every year, it's the same thing. And it's, this is the fourth or fifth year that it's been going on, so can we is it too early to get a price for the sound system now, for next year? And work it in, I mean, the equipment's the equipment, that's what they have. And the security thing, is that budgeted in the Waterfront Development Corporation? Or not, maybe Jim would know, or you would know? Well, perhaps Deputy Merrick would know that or not know that, I don't know, I don't remember seeing anything in the finance report about security being paid for the water I don't remember seeing anything in the finance report about security being paid for the water shed. If you could double check, but I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel, we've been doing this for the last five years. It's just a matter of just getting it right. I don't know if it needs one grant or two grants, it's all, just because there's another grant doesn't mean that they're getting any more money. But I think if we, if we ask what the price will be ahead of time, and let's do it ahead of time and say, okay, we'll put this money aside, because if we're doing the grants to organization, January's going to come pretty quick. So we'd have this information, and we'd have either an assigned agreement, if we go with the Coal Shed Festival, we'll have that down, we'll have that in writing, and that, that's what we know we have to have. And if Jim could find out, or you could find out what it is for security and what else do they, money they need, then we can, it's pretty, pretty simple.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Counselor Langel.
Thank you, your worship. In talking with Phil, and this has been going on now for seven years, I've got two points, I guess, to make on such concerns. Phil's biggest concern has always been, you're quite right, your worship, the sound system. That is basically it. The Coal Shed Festival, when it first began seven years ago, it was a one-week festival. It was a weekend festival. It then expanded to a full-week festival during the 250th, and now it's gone to a two-week festival. And if you recall, your worship, last time we had a presentation with Mr. DeMille, he was talking about events during the summer. I would like to see us finitely nail down, we are going to give you a sound system for two weeks. It is going to cost X. That is it. Have a nice day. We appreciate what you're doing, we fully support your event. And that's it. Get a price on the coal, on, on that sound system. It's done, it's booked, and it's finished. And then that's basically it. He doesn't have to come and apply for grants, he doesn't have to apply on anything. He knows that that lump sum is there for a sound system. Any other expenses that's incurred by Coal Shed, they have, they would look after themselves, be it security, be it whatever. I mean, the reality is donations are made, and the profits of this event go to the food bank, the fuel bank, and whatever charities, they, or school breakfast programs, et cetera. Well, you know, there are expenses in running any event, it's like anything else. And I think the town absorbing the cost of a sound system for a two-week period, and I'd be prepared to make that a motion, that we simply award a grant to the Coal Shed Festival of the cost of a sound system for a period not to, not to exceed two weeks for their annual festival. And that's it, and the CAO can get that figure. Done. And then we, the matter is over with. Because last year, we bandied around this thing forever. And I think if he knows upfront, you got a sound system, you're done. That's my motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor, CAO.
Oh. Yeah, that, that, I think the, the key is to, is to try and be clear. Last year, we tried to just give him a financial contribution that was, and the first grant that was approved was approximately equal, a little bit short of what the sound system was. But then the subsequent ask was, was the balance of the sound system plus, plus the grant. So I think the earlier you can be clear about what the town is able to do, the better.
Can I even see a valid solution that we're going to supply a sound system?
And a grant.
And order the, you know, he has other events, you know, he'll have to do that.
Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. Plus, the other thing with, with the Coal Shed Festival, I think there's other avenues besides the town of Yarmouth for funding. And I know Mr. Warner at the Waterfront Development Corporation and Mr. Corning know of other avenues where Mr. DeMille can apply for grants to Canada Heritage or Nova Scotia Tourism. So there's other avenues besides that. So I think maybe, even though this is a good motion, I will support the motion. I think it's what Mr. DeMille wants. But I think in the long-term viability of the Coal Shed Festival, there should be other avenues for him to look at. And I think with the access that the deputy mayor has with Mr. Corning, there is, there's other ways to support this. So I think they should sit down, irregardless if we pass this motion or not, if we pass it, I think he still should sit down with Mr. Corning and have a talk with Tentin and some of the other things that, because we don't want any more surprises, and we don't want Mr. DeMille coming in at the last minute again with a concern about funding for the, for the event, so. I think he should have a sit-down with the Waterfront Development Corporation and have a talk with those people.
Thank you. Counselor Langel.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick follow-up too. Counselor Mooney's quite right, and I think the point is that this is just for this year. One of the difficulties Mr. DeMille has had is that he has not been a nonprofit organization. It's been a private, almost a proprietorship arrangement. And thanks to Mr. Warner, again, Dave Warner, he has met with Mr. DeMille, and he has now apparently put an application to joint stock for a nonprofit organization. So that will open up the door for him for funding, because the difficulty he's had is he couldn't apply for a lot of these grants, like to Canada Heritage and groups like that, because he was not a not-for-profit organization. Now that paperwork is in place, I was talking with Mr. DeMille at the farmer's market last weekend and offered to help him for a Canada Heritage application, because his festival is gold for that. He should be able to pick up $4,000 or $5,000. And Counselor Mooney's right, I think this festival, if it's done right, will eventually become self-sustaining, and I think that's the goal that we should be looking in. But from now until next year, obviously, that may not happen. So it's kind of like a year-to-year thing. So I want the intention, that's what the motion was for this, this fiscal year, and that's it, and we'll reflect on it next fall.
Good, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
I'm not, I'm not sure that I totally understand all that's been talked about. Are we setting a dollar amount that we're going to commit to the Coal Shed Festival?
Not, not today, but, but the CAO is going to find out what the amount is for the sound system, and we will provide that. That's what I understand. For two weeks. So he doesn't have to worry about this year's.
Over and above the contribution that we agree on in, at.
That's it?
No. There's no grant. There's no grant. The grant, the, the grant is.
So last year, we made a grant of $75,000 or $8,000, and then that was not enough, and we had to help with a more, more support with regard to the sound system. I just need to go further with that, so I understand.
Yeah. CAO?
Yeah, the sound system last year was in the area of $8,000. I can, I can pull the invoice and find that amount, and I can get an updated figure from, from the local supplier. In addition to that, we provided $2,500 cash towards the event. And I'm pretty sure that we also provided security down there while the equipment was, was in place. So overnight security. I, I know we did also receive assistance from the municipality of Yarmouth in the amount of $500 towards, towards the costs. Yes.
You were on first. There you go, Deputy Mayor.
I just want to make sure, the event is an outstanding event, not just for, it happens to be in the downtown, but for the whole area. And so I just want to make sure that Philip is, is understanding of where we think we stand at this point. So that's all. So as long as it's properly communicated, so he can plan now and not be upset later on. There's a lot of, I know we all realize how much effort, there's a huge amount of effort that goes into that. I know they works on it almost year-round, but, so if we make the motion, if we support the motion today, what are we actually providing for Phil?
CAO?
The motion today will recommend to council that we pay the cost of the sound system for next year for two weeks for the Coal Shed Festival. So between now and the council meeting in December, I will get a quote on what that will be, so you'll have an actual dollar amount that you're considering at the December council meeting. And if that, if that motion is approved, then we will, we will, we will contact Mr. DeMille in, in the light that you're, that you're expressing, that this is to assist him to be able to plan, plan around that commitment early and, and allow him to forego that, the grants process.
So we've already, the motion's already been made, now it's just time for devotee question, or you have a question now? So do we understand the, the motion? The motion is to recommend to council?
Question.
Okay, question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Committee appointments reviewed. What are, we're not doing this today, are we? Oh, I don't know. Excuse me. Thought we were setting a date. Yes, oh, sorry. Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, at the last council meeting, we talked about this, and I think a motion was made at the last council meeting, Linda, if I'm correct, to, to review, at the November committee, the whole, to review the council appointments to committees. At that time, we had talked about setting up a separate meeting to do it, but it was the decision of council at that time that we would do it here today. So the list of the committees that each counselor is represented on is, has been copied and circulated to you, so you, so you have that. So I guess the opportunity is, if, if you want to make any changes, then you have the list.
Counselor McCausick.
Yes, that, thank you, your worship. I am satisfied and happy with the committees that I'm on right now. I know sometimes I get frustrated and pissed off on certain committees, but that's just the nature, nature of the beast, and I'm sure everybody else is. And I've got three more-plus years to deal with it, and hopefully after that, I'll have another four years. But for now, I'm happy with the committees that I have, and that's all I need right now. And I just wanted to make sure everybody knows, and I'm happy where I am. Thank you.
Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. I'm the same way. I'm happy with all the committees I sit on. The only other one is, I'm just going to ask the chair of the water utility, is the watershed advisory committee, that falls under the water utility? Okay. So I'm happy with everything that I have, your worship. I don't want to leave or have any desire to leave any of the committees.
Thank you. Counselor Langel.
Thank you, worship. Likewise, I'm content, but again, if some people want to change, or if they want to do a flip, it won't break my heart. Some of them. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, he's on heritage with me. But as I said, if anybody wants to do a flip, they're more than willing, I have no problem. In some cases, I enjoy the committees I'm on, I enjoy them a lot. So that's my thought, so I'm quite content, your worship.
What's community liaison? I just saw that. What, what's, what's the, you're on it, you need to smarten up.
I'm not the chair.
CAO?
Thank, thank you, worship. The, the, well, I'm.
He's going to tell us.
I'm going to tell you. So back, excuse me, nine years ago, 10 years ago, we were having some issues with the compost facility in South Ohio. Many of the, many of the locals were disturbed by odors that were emanating from the facility. And we had an order against us to, to rectify the situation, which we did, and that leads into the ozone generator. We have fixed our operational issues there and are addressing odors. But as part of the order from the Department of Environment, we had to establish a community liaison committee. And so the order, that part of the order still stands, and so, so does the committee.
Do we need it?
We have to.
Oh, we have to, okay. All right.
I think, your worship, you've meet on a regular basis with the other municipal units, so.
Yes.
Any other inquiries we can handle at that time or concerns?
Good.
I'm on that.
Your worship, your worship, probably, probably on our agenda, just to let us be reminded and let the public know. Perhaps we could put that on one of our reports, just liaison, in case there's some information that, that's, that might be pertinent to our, to televised meetings. We could put that on there? As one of the committees, as one of the committees, that's on there, right? We don't usually have that on there, that I know of, I've never seen it. Our, our committee liaison committee. Community liaison committee.
Oh, okay.
We don't, we don't have that. When we get our packages, when I get my package, we don't have that on there. So if we could just put that on there, just to remind us that we do have that, just a thought, we don't have to do it if you don't want to.
Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, we haven't, we haven't listed any, we don't list any committees on the agenda unless there is a report or a set of minutes. So if there were a set of minutes, if there were a meeting in a set of minutes, it would appear on the agenda, but.
Okay, good. Deputy Mayor.
The, on the council agenda, we don't, we don't list all of the committees on every agenda. It's only if there is a report or minutes for information that are attached, and then they will appear on the agenda. But since that committee has not met in a while, there have been no complaints, we, we haven't had anything to report to council.
Good. Deputy Mayor, are you good?
I am, your worship.
Oh, okay. I'm just going around the table.
A motion that we need to approve the, the committees as, as we have for the past year, I saw moved.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Anybody, are you okay, Counselor Dennis? Counselor Dawes? Both of you? I just, well, I mean, if it's all good, it's all good, because I don't care, except the EMO, which I can't get to a meeting in, anyway.
I have to say, though, I find the YASDA one difficult for me. It's a big one. It's like an octopus, it has a lot of legs that I don't understand, so I find that one a difficult one, but I'm catching on.
Okay, all right. Everybody's good? So go ahead, counselor.
Just as a, a suggestion, maybe to help Counselor Dennis, your worship, is a thought, and I, I also attend, I lately have been attending YASDA with my other hat I wear. You know, if, could we like to help, like Counselor Dennis, because I mean, the fairness with her, especially when you're getting into the retail season as she's in, and those meetings are horrendous, they're like a four-hour special. Could we consider maybe appointing an alternate to that committee, so if, for whatever reason she can't attend, that maybe somebody could also attend in her stead, just as an op, just as a chance? And I mean, I, I don't mind assisting in that regard, I mean, I'm going to the meeting anyway. But as, as a sidebar, I don't know whether we can do that, but I can, I hear her concern, because it is, it is a very time-consuming committee. That's, I was quite surprised, you know, at the meeting I attended, how confusing it can be.
The YASTA is a, is a, is a corporate society, so it isn't an advisory committee. On advisory committees, you can have alternates, but on a society, the board of directors has responsibility. Now, somebody else could attend as a non-voting member, but you couldn't take the voting responsibility and have an alternate.
Good. All right, so there's a motion on the floor to keep the committees as is, it's already on the floor. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Carried. Full-size pickup trucks tender results. CAO. Got it right here, I don't understand vehicles if you need it. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Invited tenders were requested from five local automotive dealers for two full-size pickup trucks. One, a lease for Public Works, and the other, a purchase for the water treatment plant under the water utility. Prices are summarized below for a lease vehicle for the Public Works Department and as well a straight sale prices for, for water treatment. After reviewing the tenders, it is recommended that the contract for the lease, leasing and purchasing of the full-size trucks be awarded to the lowest tenderer, Murray GM, in the amount of $289.70 plus HST per month for the leased vehicle, and $24,514.57 plus HST for the purchased vehicle. That's for your consideration.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I just have a, a question. Why is one being tendered for lease and the other for, for straight-out purchase? I don't understand. Please, thank you.
Why don't you tell the SFLS to purchase the vehicle or is the?
Good, no, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Good enough, thank you. Answers my question. Answers my question, thank you. Dave, that was probably the best answer we've heard all year. Plain English, you're hired. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to accept the tender from? Murray GM. Okay, any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. Oh, sorry, can't see. Oh, sorry, can't see.
That's okay. Just, just one quick question. The vehicles that were replaced with the new ones, are they leased, or do we own them? One of each?
No, we own both of them.
Both of them? And how old are they, Dave?
2002, I think.
They're done. Okay, that's, what I want to hear, thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
Good job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary. Motion carried. Snow clearing removal tender results. CAO. I gave it to you. Speak up.
Thank you, your worship. Tenders were requested from local contractors for snow clearing, ice control, and snow removal from five parking lots within the downtown area for 2013-14 winter season. Four responses were received, and the results are summarized in the memo from the town engineer. Pricing is exclusive of HST. After reviewing the tender pricing, equipment availability, and references, it is recommended the contract be awarded to the lowest tenderer, JAG Snow Removal, as per the pricing submitted. That's for your consideration.
Okay.
Is that already a motion made?
No. Sorry. Moved by Councillor Mackay-Zachary, seconded. Yep, you're on.
Okay, thank, thank you, your worship. I, I'm just listening to what the CAO read there, so the references were checked with this, with this company? You check all references for companies that apply to remove snow, or dig holes, or dig ditches, whatever? And everything looks, okay, that's what I, what I wanted to hear. Thank you, your worship.
Good. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Carried? This one didn't kind of come out, Entrepreneurs Forum. So, this, this was my thought, all kinds of empty storefronts, lots of people out there that could probably fill them if we could put everybody together in a room and sort through, so, so potential funders, and landlords, and entrepreneurs, and NSCC, and mentors, and put them all in a room, sort, and see what happens. So, just, and I don't know if it's to initiate, or to support, or to get it started, because we could probably, there are probably a couple groups in town that could do something like this. Anyway, go ahead, Councillor Landale.
Thank you, your worship. If you recall, brought this up in the spring, and we, we, yeah, and it, for a variety of reasons, I think we got lost in that one. The, if you recall the discussion, one community in Nova Scotia, I won't go into specifics, what they did was really ingenious, they took the landlord owners in the downtown, the property owners, and further what you were saying, they connected business people, or people that wanted to go into the businesses, with the idea is, there'd be no payment of rent. The plan was, is here's my building, go into my building, fix it up, do whatever you have to do with it, I will continue to pay the taxes only. The business going in would, in turn, look after all of the utilities, look after whatever they do, with the intent that down the road, it's firm, like a partnership, that after a period of one year or six months, the landlord and the business would sit down and say, okay, where are we at with this? Like, are you in a position now to start paying partial rent? And it's like, it's an easing-in situation. And I know in this particular community, it actually filled up the downtown with a lot of people who just did not have the resources to pay a thousand or $1,200 a month, plus, plus, and plus, just like you were saying, and it's a matter of getting those people linked somehow. And I know it's very difficult to get key players all in one room at once, it's almost like a, an initiative of some kind to, to get involved. And I'd love to see somebody like the Chamber of Commerce, or some group like that, take the lead in this, but I, I'm with you, I don't know if it's our role to initiate this, but on the other hand, I really think we should be encouraging it and promoting it, because I know, as you said, your worship, the last thing we want is an empty downtown on May the first, you know, and if there's anything we can do to encourage business people, just young struggling businesses, it could be kids, it could be students at the high school who want to do something in the summer. To me, I don't know, if I owned a property downtown, I would be much happier to have somebody in it than having the thing sitting there, empty-looking stark, and, you know, with a little bit of creativity, I think good things can happen there, but we just need to get these groups together, and I'm not sure, your worship, how we're going to pull that one off, maybe the CAO may comment, or others may comment, but I'm just thinking to get the players together. It's almost an individual thing, like, I've got an idea, I want to go see Mike Trask, or I want to see Brian Rodney, or I want to see whoever it is, can I go in your building and do this deal? And I'm not sure how we can do that.
So, yeah, and I, and I think it would be relatively easy, I crossed out the word initiate right off the bat, because I was on the phone with Linda, I was in the car, on Bluetooth. Let's make that clear. But, but anyway, that, what you're saying, that whole idea, that there are people out there that just don't know how to access funding, there are empty storefronts that I'm sure we could work with, we just need to get them, so I have no problem talking to the chamber, I know they would love to get on board with this, and that maybe we are there, we're representing the town, because there may be things that we need to do to make things happen. So, so a partner, I don't know if we need to even do a motion, if that's the case, so. Somebody had their light on? And that would be Councillor Dawes?
No, let's, CAO.
Okay, go ahead, CAO. Okay. You trumped me, you trumped me.
Okay, the, yeah, so, so maybe our role here, because we don't, we don't start businesses as a town, maybe our role is to, is to bring in somebody from that community that had that, that program, to talk about it. Maybe it's, it's to have our development officer there to talk about getting permits, and what you need to think about in terms of your location. And maybe it's, it's, maybe our role is to have that initial meeting, bring in Service Nova Scotia, or Service Canada, Koa, the whole group, and say, can we, can we think about doing a day, a workshop? Where you, where you. You would do your 30-minute presentation, then you'd have a desk off in another room, where people can come up to you afterwards, ask specific questions. They just kind of, kind of do that, and at least have the initial meeting, and, and see if there's enthusiasm to support it. I don't see it as a costly thing, but rather, just sort of initiating, or causing it to happen.
So, maybe the motion to have the initial meeting, to bring the partners together. Yeah, okay. Councillor Dawes, you are on.
Thank you, your worship. If you, if you're entertaining that motion for the initial meeting, then I would make that motion.
Okay.
I would support it now, before, oh, I think I just made a motion, which means it has to be seconded before we can continue discussion. Is that correct?
Moved and seconded.
Thank you. Great idea, great idea. As you know, that over the last couple of, couple of, and a couple of half-years, I have been trying to get interest going in filling some of the empty store windows. I initially started out with trying to encourage the youth to create something, to adopt a window, design it, create it, design it, and put it in. It didn't grow legs, but it grew, it grew afoot. And now, this year, I'm, I'm very, very proud of the first 3D window, and there are more to come. Along that vein, I don't know how many years ago it was, one summer project, some young high school kids, they did the snow, snowball, snow cone slushy, business of their own, that summer, I don't know if anyone remembers, it was, it was. That went very well, very well. I have spoken with a number of, over the last couple of years, I've spoken with a number of landlords here on Main Street, and they are open to.
Yeah, they are.
They're open to suggestions, and there are also some vendors, not only vendors down at the farmer's market, but there are also other entrepreneurs here in town that have talents, they have great talents, but they do not have the startup cash. They also don't have the guarantee continued business to, to sign on to a long-term lease. And cooperatives such as this have been going on all across North America for quite some time, and they've been very successful. So, anything, anything, anything to, to help this along, I will support.
Yep, good. Thank you. And Councillor Landale, you're on.
Yep, just, and, and further to, to that, and the, the motion is very general, which is good. I think the goal here should be ideally, is the key players, is going to be your CBDC and the Chamber of Commerce, those are the two key players. And luckily, there's a nice overlap between both of them, and to me, they should be taking the lead. Secondly, I think it's very important that we alert or form a partnership with Jill Flynn, who is the entrepreneurship 12 teacher up at Yarmouth High. She's got 50 students currently this year in entrepreneurship and in co-op education. And these students are involved with business ventures, and they're learning different skills in the community, and I think somehow it would be nice to get her, or some of her students involved, like, I'm all about getting the kids more involved in this, because they're going to be the business people of tomorrow. So, there, there are forms, you, you almost, your worship, want to kind of put together a small, little steering committee of those key players, and plus, I see as our role primarily is maybe providing the space, or providing, renting the room, or whatever it is at the Grand Hotel, or whatever's involved, just as the catalyst for it, but let, let, and I, I would even say that, I said, let those guys look after, let the, let the business community run it. I mean, we could, we could go make an appearance and attend, say hello, but I really think, let them make the necessary partnerships. A lot of people are intimidated in setting up a business, and it's not that difficult. There's a lot of, there are some issues and some hurdles to get over, but kids, for example, don't realize, there's a five, they can get up to $5,000 interest-free from the Nova Scotia Government to set up a business, and it's refundable at the end of the year, they have to pay it back, but there's no interest, and there's a forgivable part of that money. So, if that was made aware, and some of the programs that are made aware for natives, for African Canadians, there is a lot of programs out there, and that's where, your worship, you mentioned Service Nova Scotia, if they were involved, say, hey, these are the sorts of things that we can do for you. So, it's almost like a forum, but it's a working forum for individuals, and no businessperson wants to share their idea, like, it's their idea, they want to keep their ideas, and they want that patent, so they need that person to talk to. So, like, a general format, this is what we have, this is what we can do, and now go forth and meet with different prospective landlords and say, how can we make this happen? So, I think it's a, it would be a good initiative.
I agree. It's funny, you talk about the, the youth, but when I, when I called the CAO, I said, youth entrepreneur, and we both agreed, there's too many people aside from the youth, but they need to be, and NSCC as well, everything they're talking about is entrepreneurship and innovation, so it's the whole package. Councillor Dennis.
I just, to me, if we want to grow our downtown, we need to diversify our downtown. Right now, the retail down there mainly is, say, gift stores, drug stores, so we need to find people with new ideas, and people need more choices, because we want to make our downtown more exciting, so we'd like things that are different, and then that way, we have a better draw to bring more people to our downtown.
Exactly. Councillor Mackay-Zachary.
Thank you, your worship. CAO, you had mentioned having some of our staff. We had this conversation earlier today, I called you, with a question on the mayor's Entrepreneurs Forum, I wanted some clarity, and you gave it to me, which was good. So, but, we had a discussion on some of the staff that with permits, and other, other things that the town has restrictions on, and you need to get permits to do this and do that, sometime they can be, they can be time-consuming, so I think us as a council, we have the capability of making things a little bit more easier, move fast forward, than slow things up, and I think by listening to the CEO, I think, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but I, from what I got from him, and from you, your worship, on this, it's a thing that we, we ought to do, and we ought to do it sooner than later, and it's a good thing, and all what was said here just a few minutes ago is great, but the only hindrance can be, and I know from experience, can be permits, and the knowledge of them, so if and when we have this forum, we have the right people set in place to give all this information out, and Jeff says, he's the one that brought it up, and perhaps we can have these people at the forum to do this, some of our staff, so, is that what your intention was, CAO?
Your worship, what, what the councillor I spoke about was, was just that, the permitting, and, and that our development officer could do a, could be one of the people that could speak, because it's not just about your business plan and your financing, but, but the where you can do it, the development officer is the one who administers the land use bylaw, and, and issues development permits, and so, I think she would be a, a great resource for people to meet. Now, one of the tools in her, in her toolbox actually comes from Industry Canada, this BizPal online service, which you could actually go on there and enter information about the type of business, and it will list not just municipal permits, but provincial and federal permits as well, that you may require, so, and, and you could save your file and go back to it as you, as you get your permits, so it's, it's a tool, again, that she could introduce as part of that, that forum to, to young people, to help to, I guess, help them navigate through the red tape.
So, one of the things, I mean, I don't, I don't mind getting it started, but, but I agree with Councillor Landale, I mean, it needs to be in the hands of the right people, but we need to fully support it. This is our town, we're trying to build, and things like that, so what I'll do, once I get it started, is send an email out to each of you, and you just feed the information, who do you think should be at that table? Because we don't want to miss, right? I mean, I completely agree, she needs to be there, I, I think, you know, Phil said, CBDC, like, all those we don't want to, I think they're all on my list right now, but, but we don't want to miss them. Councillor Landale?
You're right, your worship, and you've got a lot of things on your plate, so I mean, the last thing you, you need is something else. My suggestion would simply refer this to both those groups, and simply say, okay, guys, this is something that's come up around the table, what do you think? Can you work with this? And I'd be shocked if they said no.
Oh, they must say no.
They're going to grab it, and then let them run with it, and then let, let them go, and like, and we, our only involvement would be to, as a, as a supporter, we would be a, you know, maybe assist them with, with the accommodations or something, a small, a small assistance, but I really think the signal has to be given that it's their project, like, it's from the business community, not from the town, because, you know, we sometimes stick our nose into things that we shouldn't be into, as a, as a municipal government, but on the other hand, let the business community do their thing with it, and I'm very confident in both the Chamber of Commerce, a very active organization, they've got a good staff, and the, and also the CBDC, excellent group of people, and they have the expertise to do it, let them run it, let it be their event, and, and, and go with it from there, and I think our role would be just to kind of hope, and kind of be there kindly in the way, and also, most importantly, is to take pass on names of individuals who we think should be there, like, young people, or entrepreneurs, like, I'm thinking people like, throw it out, I hate to mention names, but you get somebody like Sue Hutchins, who's a photographer, maybe something, she might want to do something in the summer, or maybe Dan Earl Painting, or maybe, you know, who knows, an antique sharp, who knows? Any of these groups may be interested in that, just bringing them together.
Good. Okay, so what's the motion?
Initiate.
That we initiate an Entrepreneurs Forum. Okay? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Carried? ATVs on Water Street. I missed that. Oh, there's a, it's a memo. CAO.
Your worship, that, that question was referred to the Traffic Authority and Town Engineer, and he's provided a memo to you concerning the, I guess, the possibility or the constraints, and he's actually even provided you with a, with a possible solution, given the current legislative framework. Davis here, I don't know if he wants to address that memo himself to you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Basically, the way the law is now for off-highway vehicles, there's nothing I can do to prevent it on the Water Street, so I gave the, the suggestions for it, but there are other routes up there, you probably have it. This would involve, of course, some funding and so on, trails and such, to be able to carry it open.
Okay, Councillor Mackay-Zachary, you're on, because.
Yep.
CAO can't get to it.
Yes, yeah, okay. He's out of control. Thank you, your worship.
Hereby banned from the camera. Oh, my goodness.
I, I read the report, I'm happy with the report, I think we should accept it, and it is our, our traffic advisory member, he made it perfectly clear, as he did before, I don't see any problem with us accepting it as a town. It's not there, it's not there, you can't pull the, the room out of his hat, say, here it is, and we'd like to accommodate everybody, but, you know, from the municipality, whatever, whenever they're in town, but sometimes you just haven't got the wherefore to, to do it, so, as he says in his letter, there are other alternative routes to get where they want to go, to get whatever they need, and so, I think it's a, it's a great report, you've done your work, Dave, and I thank you for the time that you spent on this, this year, last year, and the other three years before that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Landale.
Well, I'm one of these ones that like to get her done. Dave, I echo Counselor Mckayzak and I think we need to go one step further, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the recommendation off our engineer and chair of whatever traffic authority with regard to the linking of the trails, that this be sent to the Trail Association with our encouragement that they may want to pursue this as a viable option. And at least something is happening and then throw it back at them because they've been coming to us and let them deal with it and they can go the necessary steps because this is really a benefit to them. So to me, this recommendation from Mr. Ernst, that last paragraph, say, here's a suggestion, guys, go the next step and let them know that there's nothing we can do currently. And this came up at UNSM, your worship, if you recall. You know, this isn't going to get changed. I mean, this is going to be years down the road and at least this is a project that this group can maybe start looking at. Frankly, I think it's exciting and I think it's doable.
Okay. So the motion is to send the engineer's report to the, to the traffic authority's report to the Trail Association.
Okay.
Okay? You good, Linda? Got that? And we are?
Maybe the Minister of Transportation.
And Minister of Transportation.
And maybe not.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Whoops, I just lost. Wiki, wiki, wakey, wakey.
You're good.
I support your motion, I do. You took half, half of it out of my mouth. That's what I was going to, I'm going to, sorry, you owe me. I'll collect one day. And Will, now I have a question that, to your motion, will that also automatically include that the, that they also look into the other routes that could be developed?
That's it.
That's it? All right. Yes, because I was going to ask, is that going to require a motion? Fine. Thank you.
It's on the bottom of the letter there.
Yes.
Counselor Mooney.
Good work, Dave. You nailed it right on the head and I think, I don't know what's the answer, it's not the answer that the Trail Association's looking for, but it's going to solve, it's a start. And with the resolution they made, the UNSM Counselor Langel nailed it, it's going to be several years before they deal with that. There's other municipalities in Nova Scotia that have a hard time letting all-terrain vehicles travel some of their streets or, you know, make those connections. So Dave, you got it right on and it's a starting point and let those guys take it and if they have a beef with it, talk to the minister. That's where, that's where the power lies right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion's on the floor. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Dedication. Counselor Mooney.
Your worship, this was brought up, I went to a service the other day, but I'd like to take it off right now. I know it won't be anything done until the springtime anyways and maybe I'd like to make a motion that we send, and I don't know if we have it in place, a procedure to do dedication or placking of any benches or any other thing in the town of Yarmouth.
I don't understand the motion though.
The motion is, is we dedicate things and we plaque things and we do things. I'd just like to get it clear, maybe we'll send this back to the Heritage Committee. I might have jumped one step.
Okay.
Ahead of what I should have done, I've done this independently, so I think maybe instead of coming through an individual counselor, should maybe go through the Heritage Committee or the Communities in Bloom Committee for placking or for naming of streets or for naming of a tree or for, but I think I might have overstepped, overstepped my boundary, maybe. But I think it should, it should maybe go through another lens besides just one individual.
Okay, I understand that. Go ahead, because I'm going to ask you a question.
It's, I must say, counselor, it's an excellent motion. You know what I mean? But I also hear where you're coming from because this has been brought up on Communities in Bloom a fair amount, that we would like to see down the road, a system put in place, your worship, where that the town would be able to dedicate specific benches or areas for, in memory of residents or in case somebody wants to donate money for a plaque or money for a tree or money for a garden, that the town would consider doing that. But I think where the counselor's coming from, I don't believe in the CAO can sort me out on this one. We don't really have a policy and procedure in place for that right now and I think that's what Counselor Mooney's suggesting. And that's really what we should be maybe doing through either Heritage or Communities in Bloom, probably more likely the Communities in Bloom Committee. Let them take the chew at this and maybe come back to council with a recommendation with a policy and procedure, work with the CAO to get it done right, that we would have so that people would know upfront, okay, I'd like to do this for a loved one, I'd like to do this for a citizen. Your motion, Counselor Mooney, was beautiful. It's not more deserving than anyone. I think it's great, you know, but, and I think you're right. So let's go with that route.
Yeah, and thank you, your worship. And the other thing, there is a cross-pollination every once in a while between Communities in Bloom and the Heritage Committee. And we sit, myself and the Counselor Langel, as chair of both committees, sit on both committees. So we have it coming through both ways. So do you think it would be better going through Communities in Bloom? Okay, maybe I'll change that to Communities in Bloom. We'll send it to the Communities in Bloom Committee for consideration.
Okay. Good, thank you. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I also agree with both of you. When I read the, when I read the motion here, Counselor Mooney's motion, my heart went ahh. And absolutely, definitely, but my, but then my first question was, how many more-than-bricks-and-mortars people do we have here in town? And where does it stop? It does have to go through a body and I think that's a marvelous idea. So thank you very much.
It's in my ear time. Counselor Dennis?
I think it's in my ear, I think it turned on.
You're on.
I think it was a great motion as well, but I see the problem too because there's a lot of people that would like to have a plaque. When I was in Victoria, BC, they had a wonderful idea and it would, it was down by the waterfront, they had this wall. So it'd be just like in the back of this building, the wall that we have right here, they had plaques the size of what that little plaque is there, just little square plaques. And they were brass and they had the person's name, date, and a little bit of history on that person and it was almost like a walk of fame. So we have walls here that we could actually utilize that and then people could put those little brass plaques on.
CAO?
Yeah, I'm not going to add a lot of value here other than say, I think Communities in Bloom is the right place because heritage is a mandate under there. And really, if this turned into a situation where people wanted to make a contribution in memory of an individual, it could allow us to do more benches and more street furniture that we so desperately need.
Do you mind if I, okay, go ahead. I'm just going to add.
Yeah, I agree. And Counselor Dennis is also on Communities in Bloom with us and that should be something we should definitely look, that wall is really a great idea. I would also like to suggest, and I hope this motion, I suspect it'll be passed, but I'd like to suggest, your worship, that maybe Mayor Mooney, Mayor Mooney, God slipped again, I apologize, Mayor Mooney.
It's only been a year, I figured you'd slip it in.
Oh, yeah.
But you know what?
It was without malicious intent.
Doesn't change anything. Go ahead.
Anyway, I really, I really feel that Counselor Mooney should make his motion and that it be referred to the Communities in Bloom Committee so that it's on the books so that it's not forgotten. You know what I mean? So he should make the motion, I gladly second, or somebody could. And then I'd make a motion that be referred to Communities in Bloom and then they'd have the motion as an example of what to do, to work with it. Okay, here's a concern, how do we deal with this, you know? And if it's a recommendation that committee to council, that they can go accordingly. But it'll give us something to chew on at the committee level.
So I have, go ahead. Okay, I just want to mention this. Out of the all-hands-on-deck, the in-memories committee, and it was a big one, and people wanted to donate money in memory of, and I don't know what all the dynamics were, but the couple of things were the plaques, there were the benches for downtown in strategic places, there were trees, like, can I buy a tree and plant a tree because some people, that's their thing. So I think we need to sit down and funnel that through the Communities in Bloom. Which was the intention of all those things that came out of that meeting was that we need to have a tangible place so that it's done right and it's not willy-nilly and somebody isn't just planting a tree in the middle of somewhere for nothing. And it's, we're trying to develop the town and it all adds to the package. So I'll do that. Go ahead, Counselor Mckayzak.
Thank you, your worship. I can see this could get out of hand very quickly. The monument down below us here, I mean, there's a lot of people and quite costly to put those on there. The funds have to come from somewhere. It either comes from our coffers that we do roads with, we do sewers with, we do our policing, we buy equipment, we do whatever, whatever. It's a good cause, it's a well-worth cause to do, but it has to be tasteful and it has to be meaningful, which it would be, but it also has to be that I, Daniel Mckayzak, would like to put something on a plaque or whatever, whatever the heritage or whatever committee decides to put that up at my cost, not the taxpayer's cost. Because it's a nice gesture and it's a good thing and we can make it happen, but it also has to be a tasteful thing. It just can't be, well, he was a great cook, but he was, you know, whatever, or he was a great, great gardener, or he was ever whatever, great rappy pie maker, seafood child maker, whatever, you know, you can call me anytime, stuff like that. Anyway, but it's got to be tasteful and it's got to be at not the taxpayer's cost. But I think it's a great idea and there's lots of things and I think it fits right with the Committees in Bloom and that's where it should go and I'm anxious to see what's going to come out of it. Thank you, your worship.
I agree 150%. I think, maybe I shouldn't, maybe I should, with your, you're the rappy, but your plaque's going for rappy pie. But I think, I've said it at the provincial level too, the proverbial hand is always out. Every time something needs to get done, the hand comes out. And I'll say this and I believe it, that the community, I don't believe they have a problem stepping up and saying, if I want to donate a bench in memory of my rappy pie maker, I don't mind, I'm going to pay for it. So, but we just, you're right, we need to keep, somebody has to make sure that this is done well and then as we put the names, then whoever puts the names pays for it. It needs to be that way.
Your worship, and just further to what Counselor Mckayzak's concerned, the Communities in Bloom Committee has been wrestling with this now for, I'd say, close to two years, Counselor Mooney, Counselor Dennis. And the business of tasteful, that's the whole intent. We have completed a tree inventory of our trees that we have in the town of Yarmouth. We have a plan that we know what trees have got to be planted, where, when, and why. We are pushing for uniformity and tastefulness in any placking monuments, et cetera. But I think most important is this is seen as a sustainable project. We're not putting the hand out as such. The intention is if somebody wants to do something, a very good example, like plant a tree in Frost Park, and you're right, your worship, we don't want these things willy-nilly going in. We want to follow a plan. We established with Communities in Bloom a tree nursery for that exact purpose because we know that these trees will thrive in this area and we've been putting in new species to test them. So things along that line are there and I think it's wonderful if it's funneled through the Communities in Bloom because we have a very active committee there, it's a professional committee. We have people that have a great depth on that committee and they've done incredible work, as you can see with our awards that we've won and what the community's achieved. And I think, your worship, you know, to funnel it through us would be perfect and that committee meets monthly and it's becoming more and more active. So that'd be great.
Thank you. Counselor Mooney.
I'd like to make a motion, your worship, to, okay, is that, did I put it to Heritage Communities in Bloom, Linda?
Okay.
I cleaned it up a little, I cleaned it up way, I got this one, this one will sound way better than that one.
Okay, let's read this one so I know what's on the, I don't know what's on table. Go ahead.
Okay, this is to refer to Communities in Bloom, policy or procedure for dedications and patches.
Yeah, and either citizens and/or organizations, but I think that's pretty well encapsulates what I had in mind.
Can we have a friendly amendment to add citizens and organizations? That's a good point. Good point. Anybody disagree with that?
Question.
Okay. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Mariners Center, oh, I'm sorry, does somebody?
Counselor Mooney, I just want to go along with the other motion.
Well, I think the other motion was basically a mirror image of what that one was. I didn't think I sounded that smart, actually, but Linda knows me pretty good now.
Okay, so we are on the Mariners Center trailer. Okay, go ahead.
But if I, if I may, I don't know when Mr. Ernst is going to leave, but there was one item we should be bringing up with, to Mr. Ernst's attention, if I may, that came up with the Police Advisory Committee. And I'm afraid I might forget it. And that's the one regarding the correspondence we got from, email that you sent a few minutes ago from Misty regarding.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes. And I just wanted to bring it up to Dave and to council's attention. I hope you don't mind me kind of scooting in here, but I might forget it. Dave, there was concern during the Santa Claus parade where it was in the dark and we had people parking along the main street and the Police Advisory Board are recommending to you that for next year's parade, that we may do no parking, similar to what we follow with Seafest on the street, that before the permit is issued, maybe you would give consideration to that, that no parking, same rules as Seafest because it was, there was a lot of concern with kids and in fact, the mayor just received an email earlier on it and maybe something you may want to look at.
I was kind of wondering why parking wasn't banned for the parade. Nobody had mentioned it.
We're hoping you make a condition in the future for it.
So should, do we need a motion to?
Yeah, I'd like to make that a motion.
Is there?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Yeah, the motion, your worship, is that it be referred to the traffic authority, that it is the preference of council, that all parades that are held in the town of Yarmouth follow the similar parking ban process that is put in place for the Seafest parade.
Okay, moved by Counselor Langel and pre-seconded by Counselor Dawes. Any further discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, your worship. That's an apology.
No problem, that's good. Mariners Center trailer. Did you want to, go ahead, Counselor Mooney?
Your worship, early in the week, I contacted the CAO for some information on if there's any motions or any contract for that trailer being on the Mariners Center property, which is jointly owned by the town and municipality. And as you know, I'm, or my family's in a protracted legal exercise right now that came with, and I might ask the solicitor for an opinion on adverse possession. So I did learn something this week, but if there's not a contract, if there's not a contract or a motion from the board, if that trailer stays on there for so many years, I guess that can they claim, claim that trailer if it's in there for more than 10 or 20 years?
Okay.
Well, I don't know if we want to get into, adverse possession is a little complicated. It's what they call, it has to be for a period of 20 years. It has to be without permission and it doesn't apply against municipality, so.
Wow.
Good.
So if the land is the town's land, then another entity cannot claim adverse possession.
I just wondered, the CAO, I was just wondering if they uncovered anything.
Oh, you guys craft me up. So, so do you want to do this?
Well, I didn't know, I didn't get the information back from the CAO if there's a contract or a.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see his light on, I can't see.
Okay.
Well, I was able to uncover some information, but I can't say that I've got a complete file on the trailer. The trailer appeared on the property around the time that the town and municipality bought it the second time. Okay? Initially, the trailer was for an office for the Agricultural Society or the Exhibition Association, whichever, to prepare for and host the exhibition because they did not have an office space on site and they needed that in order to host their event. The trailer never moved off the site from, I don't believe, from the time it first arrived there. It was not initially connected to any services. It is now collected, connected to water and sewer through Mariners Center and it is It is now collected, connected to water and sewer through Mariners Center and it is connected to electricity through their own meter. At one point, I found a, a reference from the former CIO of the town, that he felt it was in, in violation of, of some bylaw, it's not specific in, in what I found, but that he would be, he would be seen that an SOT was issued. I, I don't know that an SOT was ever issued against the, the trailer or the owners of the trailer. The bylaw enforcement officer, or sorry, the development officer has no record of a development permit to allow the, the trailer on site. It is not metered, the water is not metered separately, so we have no, no direct involvement from the water utility and the sewer service is an extension from Mariners Center, so it was not something done directly through the town. So, long and the short is, is that it exists out there, I can tell you there is no rent collected by Mariners Center for the existence of that trailer on site. There is no compensation provided for water or sewer. They do have their own, as I've mentioned, their own power meter, so they pay their own power. There is no lease or agreement that I was able to uncover. It, it just has simply remained in place and gotten settled in over the years.
Does, does that help you? Yeah? Counselor McCaughy?
Seth, thank you, your worship. Well, I know from experience dealing with the town before my counselor days, that renting space from the town of Yarmouth is quite a process and it is quite a costly process. And it cost me a lot of money one year to find out the hard way, probably around $30,000 it cost me. But, and that was only being six inches over the recommendation that had in the bylaw for my bumper of my vehicle was six inches over and it wasn't permitted to be where it should be. And it was enforced. And I can think if I was taking water and sewer from my own home, hooked it up direct, where would I be? Not only that, but previous to this trailer's being out there, it was, the manager told them to disconnect the power and put their own power in. So they've been having power, water, and sewer for I don't know how many years. This is not the cause of hardship on anybody, but the trailer is on town land and the municipalities' land, a joint owners. If anybody else was doing what they're doing, we wouldn't put up with it. And not only, not only that, but we enforce our policies to the fullest and we should. Now, this has fallen, it really hasn't fallen under the radar, there's just has been nothing done. And if we're not gonna do anything, then it opens it up to a lot of things in the town of Yarmouth when it comes to space. And if it's gonna be fair for one, and I had this conversation earlier with Jeff, then it should be fair for everybody. So if you're not gonna charge these people, then we have to come to some agreement where it's gonna be, they're gonna have to pay rent and if it's, if they're not permitted to be there, then they shouldn't be there. There has been some concern with the manager, speaking to the manager here one day, the three or four of us here, that when they remove snow, the, the trailer's in the way. Now, they came there with the trailer probably eight, nine, 10 years ago and it's been there ever since. I say that this motion that is before us from Counselor Mooney, that it should be considered and considered to the fullest. This, these people there that own the trailer, I don't know who owns the trailer, haven't got a clue. I don't know if the town knows or Gil knows or anybody knows, I haven't got a clue who owns it. But it's been there for all these years, it's time to move it or find out from our, our, our officials if it meets the standards or our policy. And if it doesn't, like anybody else, adios amigo, see you later. That's the way it should be.
Thank you. Counselor Mooney?
Motion, your worship, would like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth requests the Mariners Center Management Board to ask for the removal of the trailer from their property. And I don't know what the legal description of the trailer is, because I do not know who owns the trailer either.
Okay, can I ask a question? Do we?
And he seconded, and in discussion, he was right, we had discussions with the manager of the Mariners Center and there has been some problems with removal of, of snow and ice from the Mariners Center, bringing it out back with the location of the trailer and it has caused him some problems in moving and doing work for the Mariners building itself. So, I'd like to bring this to the attention of the board and if there is gonna be any discussion, maybe Counselor McCaughy's right, you know, we're paying for their water and sewer, is that right? I don't think any other citizens expects that. I don't know if Danny, when he hooked up his, uh, his trailer when he was in business two years ago, if he's gonna heck it up, hook it up to the, any town-owned water and sewer. I don't think that's fair and that's right for the citizens of the town of Yarmouth, be paying for somebody else's water and sewer. You know, I don't think they expect that from, from anybody.
So don't turn your light off yet. I just want to ask, have we, have we asked, we, we've talked to, to the Mariners Center about this, like, as opposed to tell them to take the trailer from the property, we, we know that they're not paying rent, like, we know all that stuff. I'm just taking, just to cover the bases, to make sure that...
And I think this motion, uh, this motion might be a little, little bigger than what I encompass, but I think there has to be discussion on, on, I think Mr. Dears, and I don't want to speak for him, he didn't find anything in place, any, any agreement or any rental agreement out there. He told me about the water in the sewer.
Yeah.
Um, he told me at one time, the town of Yarmouth and the municipality of Yarmouth, we're paying, paying for lights and electricity at the trailer and he didn't find any agreement or contract in place. So I think it's only fair and incumbent on us as counselors that, that we do our due diligence and, and if they are gonna keep the trailer in place, is it where Mr. Dears and the management of the Mariners Center Board want it? It's not where they want to put it, it's where, where it's most convenient and best for us to conduct our business as a important part of infrastructure in this town, either be playing hockey, running trade shows or doing other things, but it's not for them to put the trailer in place, it's for us, if it's gonna be there and have rent, rent collected upon it, but, um, like Counselor McCaughy said and echoed by Counselor Langel, what happens if somebody else wants to come put a trailer up out on our property? We have to treat, we have to treat them all the same, we can't say yes to one and no to another.
Yeah, and that was my question, I just, I didn't know if everybody, if the questions had been asked, are you paying rent, are you, all those, so those, all those questions had been asked.
And I think this will be brought up to the, the Mariners Center Board and I think the CIO has the, has the intentions of what we've discussed around the table and he can bring them forward to the, to the Board and, and to the Chair, Harold Richardson, and to the manager, Mr. Dears, and I think he can basically echo our concerns around the table.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Doss?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, there's been a lot of back and forth, so I'm, I'm, I'm a little, little confused. Has ownership of the trailer been established, yes or no?
Yes.
It has, and who owns it?
Agricultural Society.
I can't hear you.
Agricultural Society.
I'm not deaf, I just can't hear behind your hand. Now, uh, straighten, straighten me out on, on, on something, please, the history of the Mariners Center now. We, some things we tell Mariners Center to do and some things Mariners Center just does on its own?
Go ahead.
CIO, please.
Yeah, Mariners Center operates, the, the Board operates the, the property on your behalf without, without interference, basically. The two, the two owners stand back and allow them to manage, you can send them information...
I'm sorry, the two?
Two owners, the two municipal owners, so, so they're not getting conflicting directions. So they, they can get information from us, they can get advice or comments or whatever. Most importantly, though, when it comes to capital improvements, they need our, they need our money and so their, their capital improvement plans, as we've seen over the years, come before Council and then it's Council's decision whether to fund or not. But other than that, their, their direction is to, to run a fiscally responsible outfit, to not give subsidies and to, to try and break even.
Okay, thank you very much. So, they themselves, they don't, they don't need direction from, from us to, to do this?
No, but the fact that you're concerned about this is good information for them to turn their attention to and focus on it, because I think it's, it's something that wasn't, wasn't, I'll say, up until this point, a priority for them to be concerned with.
Okay.
Because it's been sitting there for years, that's why...
All right, so, well, if they don't need direction from us to do this, then as much as I'm, I'm okay with it, but then I, 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 I will not support the motion. They can, they can go do it on their own anyway, they don't need us to tell them what to do.
So, so what, the situat- sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, CIO.
So the trailer, we've determined this week, does not, there is no development permit that exists for the, for the trailer, so it does need, need a development permit. And so Mariners Center, if they don't apply for a development permit, will receive, as everyone else would receive, a 30-day notice to either get a permit or remove the development. And so Mariners Center will have to decide if they want it to stay, if they want it to stay there and under what conditions. And further to that, of course, the, the subsidy consideration is important, that if they're not paying rent and not paying for services, then in fact Mariners Center is providing a subsidy, that, that may not be fair and, and they should consider a different, a different model.
All right, thank you. Good, good. Okay. Okay, so the motion on the floor is that the town of Yarmouth requests the Mariners Center Management Board to ask for the removal of the trailer from the property. Okay, we're, we're only one partner, so, yeah. All right. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
All those, questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Nay.
Okay, one nay. Motion carried. Cigarette butt receptacles. Counselor Doss, you're on.
Thank you, your worship. This is, um, this is in, has to do with some of our fans that, that enjoy watching the world go by on, on, on Main Street. They enjoy their coffees in, in the fresh air. I have spoken with a number of them over the past year and they're actually very, very approachable. This is something that also came up during the latest, the recent Police Advisory Board meeting and I kept forgetting to bring this up. It has been suggested many times that perhaps to help, to help, that a cigarette butt receptacle or two be placed on Main Street, specifically around the cor- at the corner of Main and Central Streets, preferably closer on the central corner of that, central side of that corner. And also, I don't know if I, if I can add on to this or, or, or my next question is if that will require a motion of its own, but, street benches, street benches on Main Street, they have been mentioned a number of times. If we had some for, especially coming up for, for the next, for the next tourist season with the boat coming, the benches such as Mr. Leonard's Husband's Bench, that was very, very popular and it was used, it was used a lot. So that's what I'm, I don't know, would that, would the bench require a separate motion?
That's a separate motion.
All right, fine.
So, I don't even know, so are you moving this? Does staff be directed to look into the cost of purchasing placing cigarette butt receptacles in strategic locations in town, for example, corner of Main and Central Streets?
Yes.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second there?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Counselor McCaughy?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Your worship, uh, I think perhaps maybe this should be sent to the Communities in Bloom, because it's part of the role that they play in beautifying, beautifying our downtown and our parks and whatever. And cigarette butt receptacles is to me telling people it's okay to smoke. And for the town of Yarmouth, I don't know, to buy these and put them in front of stores, I think it only brings more people to stand by a cigarette butt receptacle and smoke and put it out. I think people's got enough problems now in the downtown core and different, different parts of town, that they don't need encouragement from receptacles to huddle around a receptacle and put their butts out. It's, I, I can't get my head around this, the, the, the taxpayer should buy these and, and put them out on a building or in front of people's places. The people, the, the hospital and other places are telling people, "Don't smoke out in front of our buildings." We talked about, at one time, I thought banning cigarette smoking in, in front of public buildings or a certain, I know we have it on Parade Street, so to encourage people just to put their butts out receptacles, it's not a great idea, I don't think, and I don't want to discourage the counselor for bringing up motions or anything, but, uh, I don't think I could be, I, I'm not in supportive of that, but then again, the benches and that, that's, that's not a bad idea, but I think perhaps maybe to the commu- Communities in Blooms, it should be put before their, their, their committee, perhaps, and look at it there and see, see what they think, they might have some designs and stuff. I know that the engineer has books on it, Jeff has books on it from trade shows and stuff, there might be some good ideas out there for, for benches and what have you. It wouldn't be the only town that have benches on Main Street. I think it's a great idea and perhaps something that you could move in the winter time, put out in the summertime, like we do with the summer front benches now. So anyway, I, I just wanted to put my two cents worth in, well, I like to refer to the Communities in Bloom, if I may.
Thank you. Counselor Mooney?
Your worship, as you can see right here, I have probably enough motions here for the next several months that I've been working on for the last little bit. And actually, in this stack of papers, one of the motions I thought I was gonna bring up either in December or January for this, for this coming tourist season is actually banning smoking on Main Street between Forest and Grand or Porter.
Here, here.
Entirely on Main, uh, I had a good talk with, uh, just before Steve McNeil came here during the last provincial election, they did a cleanup on Main Street and I talked to Steve DeViller, the, the pressure wash guy, and he said it took him six hours in front of Tim Hortons to clean the butts and the gum out in front of Tim Hortons. He said it was absolutely, he said, Phil, it was absolutely disgusting what he did. And, and just walking up and down the street, and I know Counselor McCaughy, he's probably the, the king of the walkers around the council table now, um, I would like to see, you know, the, the, it's gonna, the butt recept- the butt, the butt receptacle. You got that one on TV?
Let's just, it's the Keep Your Butt Off Main Street program.
Butt receptacle, my pole, my pole dance baron are gonna be the two famous ones. But I, I'd like to see something a little further and I'd actually like to see us take a proactive approach, send something to the waterfront development, which is now encompassing our downtown, and see if they can come up with something that would actually ban, I know it's gonna take some enforcement, we're gonna get some grief over this, but I'd like to see no smoking on Main Street at all. It might help loiter, some, some of the loitering problems, so. I don't think, uh, the receptacle's not a bad idea, it's just kinda putting your finger in one small hole in the dike and trying, trying to block a large surge of water, but I would probably support the motion, but, uh, your worship, at a later date, don't order those too fast, Dave. At a later date, I'll be probably making a motion that we banned smoking on Main Street from Forest to Porter.
Your worship, I'm seconding your preference.
You're, you're doing what?
I'm seconding his preference, referred to the page.
Okay, so there was already a motion on the floor.
His motion was referred to Communities in Bloom.
Okay, but the motion was as it is on the paper? So there was already a motion on the floor?
Yes, we're asking to have it referred to Communities in Bloom.
Okay, so how does that work?
We're not done yet.
You just moved a motion to refer it to Communities in Bloom.
So how, so what I'm saying is how does that work when there's already a motion on the floor that we have?
We have a reference motion.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. I don't read all my rules, I just run the meeting, right? I know most of them. No, and that's what's my question.
We go around references.
Go ahead, can I do that? I mean, they're saying I can, but...
Um, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. All right. So Counselor Dennis, you're on, go ahead.
I was just gonna speak on about the butt recept- receptacles.
Keep Your Butt Off Main Street program.
One of the, one of the main places that I'd like to see one is the Knights of Columbus, because that is really always full of cigarette butts. And it should, these should be in places where smoking is okayed, so, I mean, when they have events like weddings and everything, people are always out there smoking and that sidewalk's always a mess. So that would be kind of the places that I'd like to see... So, that would be kinda the places that I'd like to see one.
Thank you. The Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Just, just a comment. The merchants who occupy the spaces where the cigarette butts end up, just clean them up. Clean the damn things up every day, every morning, every night. We don't need receptacles, we just need the merchants to get out, or the occupiers of the buildings to get out and clean up the sidewalks.
That would be nice.
And as, and you know what? They, they probably should keep their space available, but you know what gets me? I'll just say it in plain English. It's unacceptable to throw a coffee cup or a bag of chips out, but it's okay to throw fifty cigarette butts? I think it's, I just think it's disgusting. And, and we have, do we not have receptacles for garbage? You can't throw your butts in that. So, so I, I thought, I think the idea's great, too, that there's, and, and when, um, when I saw it, I thought, I know you said, the central street side, 'cause I said, "Oh, the last thing we need on Main Street are butt receptacles for the Keep Your Butt Off Main Street program, 'cause we're trying to load up Main Street." But, by this, however, but by the same token, I mean, it's, it's just unacceptable to keep, to keep throwing your, your stu- and the, and the gum and the, I mean, people are always going to do it, but, um, so now the motion is to refer this to the Communities in Bloom? Are you okay with that? To, to see what they can do with it?
Let them have it.
Yeah?
Let them have it, as long as it gets done and it gets the cigarette butts that are, that are presently being stamped on all over the sidewalk, as long as it gets them up, and it.
Good. So, the motion is on the floor that the cigarette butt receptacle issue be forwarded to the Communities in Bloom? And Counselor? Okay, go ahead. Yes. Yes.
And, and also the benches.
Oh, well, that was a second issue. That's a second motion. We'll have to do a second. That's the other one. Okay. So, so the, the issues with these cigarette butt receptacles and the benches be referred to Communities in Bloom? Okay? Because that benches thing is gonna be a big thing, I got a funny feeling. Okay, so, any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye? Contrary? Most, oops. Okay, one nay from Deputy Mayor? No.
Can I finish what I was gonna say earlier?
Oh, yes, I don't know who's got the, go ahead, Counselor McIsaac and then Counselor Dawes.
Well, thank, thank you, thank you, your worship. Now, saying to defer to where it was placed with the Communities in Bloom, that, that doesn't mean that I'm in support of the town buying and paying for receptacles to put out in front of stores. I'm not.
It'll have to come back to town.
Yes, yes, and I'm with Jim. I know years ago, first thing that a store owner, property owner done was swept, is front of his store. They've done it for years. And it, it is a shame that people congregate around a couple of spots in our downtown, but I think that's more of an, of an enforcement, rather than fix, trying to fix it with cigarette butts disposal, you know, receptacles. I don't think that's a, I don't think it's the right thing to, for tax money to be spent on putting those there on private properties that people own, these buildings in the first place, so. I'm with Jim. I won't be supporting it for buying them today, or when it comes back from the Communities in Bloom, so. Just to let you know, ahead of time.
Thank you, okay, and Counselor Dawes, you need your late on though? Nope, but you need a, you sure? Oh, when's the meeting end? Four, okay. Alright, let's go, correspondents for action. Oh, wait a minute now, six, hold it, I gotta find it. Six out, council expenses. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Yarmouth take a proactive approach to addressing the creasy concerns across the province and nationally about the accountability of elected officials and transparency around taxpayer-funded expenses by instructing staff to develop guidelines and processes that will result in all expenses of mayor and council to be posted publicly online on a quarterly basis starting the next fiscal year. I so moved.
Why, why the next fiscal year?
I, I think it's gonna take staff. No, I think it's gonna take staff, it's gonna start next fiscal year, it's gonna take staff a little bit to, if this motion passes, to, uh, to develop a process and then to see how it works, and look at other municipalities, see what they're doing, and start in the next fiscal year. I'll give them an opportunity, I know we have new, new people in place in our office. We got a new financial system coming, we're gonna do grant-study organizations earlier this year, so it'll give them a, maybe an extra, extra few days to, to get something else in place, so it won't be a burden all at, all at once.
Perfect. Okay, Counsel, so moved, so do I have a seconder? Seconded, okay. Deputy Mayor?
Jeff, are, is there a concern now with the system that you have in place? Is, is, is administration comfortable with the way we're, you're handling this now? Is it, is there?
Handling, that's not the question. Go ahead, CIO.
It's actually next on the list of, of policies and bylaws to be reviewed by the committee is our, our expense policy. This isn't really about the policy, though, this is about the, is about posting online, it's about transparency, I guess, so. You know, this, this is not, this is not a, a big deal, this is scanning documents, perhaps, or I don't know, I don't know, I'm not clear. Are we talking about scanning documents, or are we talking about simply posting totals? And, and if it's simply posting totals, that's easy, that's, that's a piece of cake. You know, that's, that's about three minutes' work. If we're talking about providing the documents, then, then that's five minutes' work.
Yeah.
So, so I seconded that, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, just, he's just gonna finish, go ahead.
I think it's a reasonable request, but I'm just not sure what's totally involved. And like, like yourself, Jeff, I, I'm just, uh, just not sure, you know, like, like, I just thought we might have a concern now, and if we, if we don't, the system is working, maybe we don't need to go, give you guys more work. But, but, so I'm, I'm, I'm not quite, I'm not quite comfortable with supporting it yet. I have no problem personally, I just, I just think about the, all the activity that's going on behind the scenes, behind what you, what people see here.
Good, thank you. And who was next? Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I guess I am. Would this, would these be itemized, like individually itemized, each expense? If you're going to put it out, then put it all out.
I agree. Yep. Counselor Landell?
I, I agree, your worship, I, in fact, I wouldn't mind to see it even roll back to the start of our term. Frankly, I have no problem. The only problem I would love, and I'm glad the CIO did bring it up, that the bylaw committee is gonna be looking at this. And I brought this up at council before. I'd love to see us get into a situation where we move for council to per diems for meals instead of the receipts business. I'm, you know, I basically, when I travel, I usually have a breakfast, lunch, and a dinner, but as CIO will comment, I usually only claim for my supper, and oftentimes, that's in the forty dollar range or thirty-five, forty range. I much, all the other boards and agencies I'm on, we operate on per diem. You know you have forty bucks a day, or forty-five bucks a day to spend for your meals, and that's it, and you have so much for your three dollars for incidentals or whatever, and that's a cut across the board. And, and how we do it for staff is a different kettle of fish, it doesn't matter to me. But I do know from a council point of view, I really would like to see us move to that per diem, because it's a nuisance with receipts, and then you know exactly what you're doing. And if a counselor wants to go and spend forty bucks for a breakfast, they can do it. And the rest of the day, they're on their own, kind of a thing, and that's, that's fine. I'd like to see us go on that, I like the idea, I'd love to see us go online with the idea of name of, say, myself, Counselor Landell, I went to the UNSM, uh, my expenses were la, la, and la, and that would be great. I think that's for transparency purposes, and people can see what we're going, but it would be nice to know why we went there. For example, like, what was the purpose, like, just not to say UNSM meeting, but maybe just aligned for whatever reason. Because I know on our expense claims, we put the reason for the conference, or we put what we were there specifically for, so that the public can see what, what we were, what we were involved in. So, I'd like to see it roll it right back to the start of our election, uh, start of our term, and then people can see exactly our movement. I mean, uh, some of us travel a lot, I know Deputy Mayor McLeod, I don't think has left town. No, I think he went to the counselor orientation, I think, in, in Furo, but I think that, they didn't go there either. So, anyway, so he's, he's easy, he's not gonna have anything. Some of us, others of us have traveled extensively, so I'd like to see that. And not only for council, but also for any, um, of our corporations that we may be going in business for. I think that should be encompassed in that, too. And I'm referring like to the water utility, Counselor Dawes and I, myself, we traveled in March, I think it was, to Ottawa for that water thing. That should be posted, too. I, I think the more transparent we are to the public, your worship, I think the better it is for all, so. Great motion, fully supported.
Couldn't agree more. We gotta get some work done on that expense policy, though. A lot of work. Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye? Contrary? Motion carried. She's good. Okay, teacher recognition. Counselor Mooney, that's all I have written down.
Oh, thank you, your worship.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to make a motion, we send a letter of congratulations to Roland Hanum, a teacher associate senior school, for being provincially recognized in the teaching field with the Nova Scotia Teachers Union Teachers Make a Difference program.
Can I have a seconder? Second? Discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye? Contrary? Motion carried. Modified house project. So, I don't know if you've even had time to read this, 'cause I just got this last night. But basically, what they're doing is, uh, they are doing twe- is it ten? Ten Maud Lewis painted homes. And they are looking for sponsors. Now, I don't know if my motion said, uh, gold sponsor, but we can go. I know that, um, the Zach's Office did Silver, he sponsored for Silver, and I think Web.com and, and a bunch of different, um, companies in town have sponsored them. And they are going to go in strategic places, and she put, I says she has nutshell here, but, to bring attention to not just Maud Lewis, but I think they're going to have some type of a mapping so that you can find each place and things like that. And if, because it's three pages, which are four pages, if you wanna just wait till the next council meeting, but I think it's a simple one. Counselor Landell?
Thank you, your worship, um, I really like this, um, and, uh, this is one area that has come up both at Herd, each and at Communities in Bloom, so I'm kinda going in second. Yarmouth has been missing the boat on the Maud Lewis craze in many cases. I do know that the Waterfront Development Corporation, Mr. Corning, I believe, and the CIO can comment, there has been some discussion over something in the Hawthorne Street area to commemorate where her house used to be. We were looking at a project there. But I, I think the more that we can support this, so, I would have no problem moving a motion that we go to the gold sponsorship level, your worship. The only suggestion would be, I'd like to see it in front of Town Hall. I think it would be a nice addition. Yeah. Yeah. If we can put it there, I think it would be gold, I, I think it would look really good, and I, I'd like to make a motion that we support this to the amount of gold sponsor for one thousand dollars.
Okay. The Maud Lewis House. Any say, yeah? Okay? I don't know, we just spent ten for the. Go find us a thousand dollars.
Do we have a thousand dollars to mod a house?
To do the modified Maud Lewis House. Counselor McIsaac, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. This is being brought on by, who's asking for this?
It's a group, um, the Art Gallery in Nova Scotia.
And it's a, it's, a thousand dollars going towards what?
It's, it's a, it's a, is it six by eight or four by eight?
Like, like the one they have down on the one oh three?
Like that, but they're doing, they're doing ten of them, and they're gonna place them strategically throughout the town in different places, so, so for example, Zach's Office sponsored Web.com, like different, different places are gonna sponsor one each and put them in strategic places throughout the town. I think there's gonna be a map that
There's a Maud Festival.
Maud Festival, so it's, it's, this is the place to get in.
Yeah, it's a major event.
Yeah. Yep.
Plus, wouldn't it be a next year's festival?
Yeah, okay. Quit while I'm ahead.
Question's been called, all those in favor? Oh, Counselor Dennis, go ahead.
So, are they going to erect them on the property and everything as well?
Yeah, well, we're, yeah. We're giving them money.
Thank you.
Okay? All those in favor? Aye? Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so, where am I? Modified? Salvation Army, I put you down there. Go ahead.
Uh, your worship, as you know, Salvation Army has, has formed a liaison with all the churches in the area, and they're doing Christmas basket and Christmas hamper, so I'd like to make a motion that we give two hundred and fifty dollars to the Salvation Army Red Cattle Campaign.
Do we have that money? To donate my money? Exactly. Okay? All those in favor? Contrary? Carried? Somebody'll do that. Okay? Correspondence for Action, seven A, over on your other page. Municipality of Yarmouth Re Youth Council Committee. So, I, I've spoken to Steve Paquette about this, and, and I don't know, I'll tell you exactly where it was. It was at the Volunteer Banquet in Halifax last year, and there was a young lady there that started it, and it was in Oxford. She had like a, a, they have a whole youth council. But we discussed, um, getting together with the municipality, the two of us getting together, and doing a youth council committee to get the youth involved and see what their thoughts are and things like that. I don't know what the dynamics are, but I'm certainly in support of it, um, in conjunction with the, the municipality. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, are you looking for a motion for, for, for this?
What is it? It's the letter from the municipality that is discussing that a collaborative effort between the Municipality of Yarmouth and the Town of Yarmouth would be an effective tool to gaining youth participation in the area. So, they're asking if we want to discuss the youth council.
Absolutely. I, I did attend, I went out to Vancouver earlier this summer, early June, to attend the, um, the UNSM conference, and one of the, uh, one of the sessions was set up, given by and done by a, an entire youth council. I don't know if you, did you sit in on that? Jeff, no? That was impressive. It was, it was organized, it was set up, and it was done, presented by youth. It was an entire council. And they were, I was, they were impressive, they knew what they were talking about, they were organized. This was not their first time, and I thought, "This is a great idea, this is what we need here as well." So, whatever we can do to support, I will be behind.
Okay? So, I, I, the motion would be that the Town of Yarmouth enter into discussions with the Municipality of Yarmouth with regard to a future youth council, simply discussions.
Yeah, and I, I would second your motion, your worship, the, because this is a, I'm not sure whether Mr. Goodman wants us to serve with him on a committee, if it's gonna be a joint committee, if it's, we're gonna have our own committee, there's a lot of things gotta be worked out. So, I think to get in, enter into discussion would be a perfect way, and come back and let us know what they wanna do.
Okay? So, who made the motion?
You did.
Who made the motion? No, I'm, I have to entertain one, I don't think I can make it.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. And then on the other sheet, the additions, correspondent, natural resource, oh, natural resources re dear population. Now, go ahead, 'cause this letter
I'm jumping into this one. Yes, I just read this, your worship, we just got it the other day. The natural resources is asking is asking us three specific questions, and I think we can answer them today for them. Number one, is the deer problem specific to one area in town or spread throughout? No, it's spread throughout. There are three herds that we know of that exist, there's three. Number one, one is up on Haley Road, around the correctional facility, and that herd basically works around the Argyle Street area, and lately has been moving down to homes closer to Pleasant Street in that area. The second herd is located in the Marshy section, that is right on Pleasant Street, that kind of that little, that, yeah, yeah, it's almost like, you know, where the frogs are, we call it the Peeper Park, it's, it's public, it's basically between Pleasant Street and, and Brunswick Street, that block in there, that's the second herd, I'm sorry, Avenue, it's a smaller herd, but they're in there, and the third herd is up by the Community College, and they are in the area off of Prospect Street in that area, that's, those are the three populations. The size of the herd, talking to residents, and this has been discussed at communities in Bloom, the one up at the Correctional Center is probably the largest, and I've had reports, and again, this is from the Correctional Center staff, is as many as 17 at one given time, you know, in around that area, in one group, and the estimates is that could be as many as 25 to 30 in that group. The one off of Pleasant Street is a little smaller, maybe eight, nine in that area, and the one on Prospect Street is quite large, about 15 to 16, 15 to 16 of them. So that's, that's question one. Question two, the safety concern, yes, we had a death, as we know, on our, on, happened on Argyle Street, motorcycle as a result, and we've had, and I'm not sure Dave Ernst can comment more, or our staff sergeant on people having issues with deer. Concerns with residents feeding, the big reason this has come up is the town, through communities in Bloom, your worship, is looking at buying a quantity of tulip bulbs for our gardens, and deer love tulip bulbs, so, and the residents, a lot of people have been telling us through the different garden clubs and such, your worship, that they're having a lot of problems with deer literally eating their trees, digging up their tulip bulbs, and digging up their gardens, so it's become a bit of a nuisance for property owners as well. So, the question was from communities in Bloom, is a way that maybe the herd can be thinned a little bit, you know what I mean? And that's where we're coming from.
I don't know what you mean.
Yee-haw. So, so, or maybe transported in other fashions.
Okay, thank you.
I have one on my pot in my stove right now. Anyway, but anyway, the reality is true. Anyway, but reality is, your worship, those would be the answers to the questions that, that we have, and I've, that may be enough to get, the, what would be, the idea would be is that you'd have to do it by, the deed would have to be done by both in the town of Yarmouth, you'd be looking at, you'd be looking at both, you'd be looking at boths.
Pardon? Ever, you ever catch, I'm going to send you a video of a guy that tried to catch
a deer. It is the best ever, yeah, they, they don't last too well, they are really cranky when they're...
So, do we need a motion to respond back?
I make that motion to respond back to that.
Okay. The, the motion's on the floor to respond to the Department of Natural Resources with the answers to the three questions posed. So moved by councillor Langel?
Second.
Second by councillor Dawes? I know, I just, the, the questions just, I thought, why don't they know the answers? But, I guess, okay. Any further discussion?
Question.